Hey, welcome everybody to our meeting. It's 5:33 on August 24th Tuesday and the Bloomfield Beautification Committee meeting is meeting. And Gwen, you would be taking the minutes today. Your name is there for this month to take minutes, okay? And I was just asking if everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes, if there was any questions or...
I just have a minor change. At the beginning, we talked about on the Notable Landscape Awards, it makes reference to an August 31st Messenger article.
Okay.
That should be July 31st. And then we mentioned something about the article being posted at Leisure Services, the senior center, but it's not the article that was going to be posted. It was just flyers about the Notable Landscape Award nominations.
Okay, flyers were posted.
That was it in terms of...
What was the July 31st? That was what?
She was talking about there was going to be an article in the Messenger about...
Article.
But it was the week, it was in for the July 31st, not August 31st.
Okay. All right, I'll have me change that. All right, so if everyone approves the minutes, do I hear a nomination to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, Gwen, so moved and Risa second. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Excellent, okay, minutes are approved and we'll move to discussing old business. So we'll start right in with Eva and the Notable Landscape Awards.
Okay, judging was completed last Thursday on the 19th. We had a one-week delay because of some transportation issues. And unfortunately, there was a big, heavy rain the night before, so maybe the gardens weren't in totally their best looking, but got it all done in one day. We had both judges Ricky Zito and Veronica Williams. We did it in five and a half hours and we tabulated the scores and we ended up with 23 winners, two businesses and 21 residential. And I think we had a record number of nominations from the community of 24, which was pretty good.
Excellent.
And so we're moving on to the next step in terms of just researching some of these addresses in terms of finding out the names of who owns these properties and confirming with them that we could use their name and photos and whatnot. So I'm working to get that done by the end of this week. And Sharon's going to be ordering some lawn signs and then given that we were delayed a week, the announcement at the presentation for the town council meeting won't be until the September 27th meeting. Because that'll give us time to get the lawn signs delivered, the certificates delivered and get photos and put a presentation together. And we plan to put in an article in the Messenger sometime in September as well, announcing the winners and talking a bit about the awards.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. How many, how many winners are you gonna have?
Twenty-three.
That's, that's the number that you've decided on, 23?
Yeah, so 21 residential, two businesses, and that compares to, I think we had 41 or 23 last year.
Right. Okay, that's good. Okay.
Okay. And you know, if you need help, Risa helped me last year with looking up the names if Debbie needs help.
Yeah, Debbie had said she would be able to help with that, so we'll see what, and then if need be, Risa, would you be able to help with it? So I'll let you know what, how, because I have a few of the, I have a few of the names already, so there aren't that many, so we'll see how we do and I might reach out to you, Risa, depending on how that goes. Thank you.
Okay.
With any winners, Eva, are you not gonna say yet?
Excuse me?
With any repeat winners?
Yes, there were.
But we're not gonna share them yet.
No, 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 I don't, no, I'm just asking if they were repeat, okay?
Yeah, there were a handful, yes. But there were definitely never-before winners.
Great.
Oh yeah, so that's, so that's good to hear as well.
Yes.
Interesting.
You're muted, you're muted.
Unmuted, thank you. Did you, when you do the awards, I know you probably have told us this before, but do you select from all areas of town?
Well, what we do is we kind of take a totally based on no subjectivity at all, just here are the scores from both judges.
Right.
The top ones, these are clearly ones, and then, you know, I think we have, we just have some subjectivity for a couple of them, yes, to just kind of just make sure that they're not all in one little area.
And you take the more modest ones as well as the...
It's not about modesty, the judges judge based on the criteria, so everyone is on equal basis.
And it was interesting because they both had different, they liked certain styles differently than the other one did, but it, you know, but there was a clear consensus on properties. It was interesting how, you know, they liked certain ones more, you know, each one liked certain things more versus the other one. So there were definitely differences, but there was, there was definitely consistency in terms of the top, the top score.
Exciting to see who won.
Yes.
Yeah. It won't be unveiled till Eva has all her components together and is ready to go door to door.
Well, yeah, and I don't know if anyone would be interested once we're in a position to go out and distribute certificates and the lawn signs, if anyone would like to join us on a couple of the...
I will help you, Eva.
If you need help.
Yeah, so I think it's just, it's just fun to see how excited they get and have them show you around and, you know, it's a good old girl experience. So once we get to that point, we'll talk, we'll, we'll, we'll get in touch with everybody.
Okay, that'll be great.
It is, it's a remarkable experience and they're just so happy to share their experiences, you know, their gardens and how they became a gardener. And in fact, Veronica, who is one of our judges this year, has a lovely garden on Sandy Lane and she had to disqualify herself as a judge. But we, we did go by and take some pictures of it.
Yeah, she has a beautiful garden.
Yes, she really does. And she was, she was a good judge, they both were good judge. Ricky has a landscaping company in the town, his grandmother was Millie Zito. And so he has definitely some distinct ties to the community and it was really fun to be with the two of them. All right, so are there, is there anything else Eva that you want to say or talk about?
No, not on that front, no.
Okay, I do have the sign, I was gonna share it, but I couldn't figure out where it was. So the sign is ready, it's going to be printed on both sides this year and it will, it won't be a generic sign because we tried that last year and people didn't like it, they wanted the date on it, so it will say 2021.
Oh, and as we were driving around, it was interesting to see that prior winners definitely had their signs out as well, so there's definitely pride in their landscapes.
Yeah, and we saw on some streets where someone won last year and the other neighbors were starting to do something with their houses and do planting.
Nice. Yep.
All through the community. Okay, well, let's move on to the tree signage, Town Hall grounds, the new arboretum at the Bloomfield Town Hall. Eva has been working with Daria on this and they've done an exceptional job and so I'm gonna let her speak about it.
Well, getting to the finish line on the display sign, which is gonna be positioned kind of where the, where the handicap spaces are on Town Hall on the Park Avenue side. Sharon and I went to the printer last week to kind of have her look at our first pass of it. And there are a few edits that I'm in the process of making, as well as we showed her a copy of the trifold brochure that we're gonna have as well. So I'm just tweaking, making some changes and I'm hoping to go to the printer tomorrow to kind of finalize things and get into her queue, because I think that they're like working on a 10-day, a 10-day lag. But we've made a lot of progress there, you know, so that's in great shape, so we should kind of, we should have that ready and printed in a couple of weeks. And Sharon has lined up someone to build the stand for our display sign and she shared our current version with him, so he knows when we get the sign and he's gonna be ready to build it. And last week, John Keough, the walk that is taking place on September 25th, it's the Tree Walk from Town Hall over to Philly Park. Daria, Sharon and I met with him last week and he walked the Town Hall property and we shared with him, you know, some of the notable trees. Daria did it and as well as some of the trees over at the, at Philly Park, so he's good to go on that. Next steps for us is to just do the tree labels and I'll be working, Darian and I will be working on that this week and next week, but the number one priority was getting the display sign and the brochure finalized, but we're definitely on track to have things done for the 25th.
So, just, I don't know if you can see this, but this is the front.
Well, very nice.
This is the front of the thing and they pulled it out.
Very nice.
So you can tell them, because I just pulled it up.
Eva's... Good job, ladies.
Yes. Eva did a map and Daria and Eva went around and identified all the trees and they have a little...
Very nice.
And it's a nice little information about why the BBC did this. They have pictures of all the, the pictures are of trees and the building on the Town Hall property. And interesting enough that we have six acres and on that six acres, how many trees are there?
Over 60 trees. And, yeah, and 28 different species, but we're just gonna be highlighting 23 of them.
And this is a mock-up, it's gonna be 18 by 24, but I don't know if you can see this, because I'm just...
Very nice.
This is gonna go on the display stand.
Very nice.
So people can walk up and Eva, tell them about the little numbers.
Oh yeah, so, yeah, so, um, all the tree, all the trees that are listed above where the map is have numbers and those numbers will tell them where the trees are, those numbers are on the map, so they could, we have a suggested kind of route for them to take from 1 to 36 or something, so, um, so they'll be easily be able to see if they look at number two, they could look at the trees and see what tree it is, and then they'll have a brochure as they go around, that's just gonna give them a description of each tree. But on the display sign, we just have the, you know, the, the common name and the Latin name, but the brochure contains the tree descriptions.
And Dan has, Dan has a display box for you.
Okay, yep.
Can pick that up, so...
Wouldn't it be nice if the schools started doing like little classes there or some, you know?
Well, it would certainly be nice to talk to the schools and say, you know, to bring their kids there, I think that would be really nice, maybe we'll to have some subcommittee go and talk to the principals. The same applies to the tree planting, that's September the 22nd is our tree planting, which I hope all of you will come to, it's at 1 o'clock. I believe that is a Thursday. And so far, nobody's signed up for it through the town, but we haven't really advertised it a lot. But the tree planting, we have 10 trees, they're all gonna go down 330 Park. Six in front of the soccer field, Arbivide Green Giant, which will grow to be large evergreen trees and they'll be spaced enough apart, so there'll be specimens. And then the other four plants are purple choke cherries, which will go in front of the tennis court. And I'm hoping that we can talk to the principal of the Carmen Aries, that maybe his kids, the sixth grader or fifth and sixth graders could come over and help that day. Even if they just put a shovel of soil in, learn something.
Be nice.
It would be, you know, a nice thing, so that hasn't been done yet, so if anybody's interested in coming with me. I met the principal, it turns out he went to school with my son. And so I'm, and at the time when I spoke to him, it was when we went to the murals, we're going up on the wall at 330 Park. And he sounded interested, like, you know, come and talk to him, that maybe that would be something they could do, so I'll hope to do that.
And we're gonna be putting in five new trees on that day, on the 22nd, on the Town Hall property that had been donated by the, our gifts from the Trees for Bloomfield Initiative.
Nice.
You wanna tell them what the trees are?
Sure, we're gonna have a American red bud, a...
No, not an American. It's an eastern red bud.
Eastern red bud.
Eastern red bud. Eastern red bud, yeah, that's right. Um, a London plane tree, the cultivar being a blood good. A sour wood, sour wood tree, a dawn redwood gold rush and what's the last one, a tri-color?
White oak.
The white oak is, is, is the, is the town is
Oh.
Town tree, but they had, that's supposed to be going in.
Is that going in on the same time?
Maybe.
Hopefully, but not sure.
Yeah, we're not sure.
What was the last tree? I'm sorry, I missed it.
Oh, sorry, tri-color beech.
Oh, nice, very pretty.
So, and two of the trees were donated, which was very nice into the fund. And I think it's gonna be really nice, and again, I'm hoping all of our committee will be there because you are the ones who created this and I want you to be acknowledged. And so we hope that on the day when we have the walk, the first part of it, John talked about being part, would be the guided walk part, you know, can't spend, he, I think he allocated maybe about 45 minutes to walk there. And then the rest of the hike or walk would go on the town green. Look at the library, at the two oak trees there, and also, it's been pointed out to me that there is a pin oak on the backside of the library.
It's very big.
Yeah, that should be mentioned and we should make note of that in our publicity and everything, so that we get people thinking about it. You know, so that it doesn't come as a surprise when they maybe try to cut it down and we make it known ahead of time.
It's nobody's surprise, it's a huge tree. I don't, don't believe anyone when they're like, oh, we didn't know.
I know, you have to really, you know, play that up. And then there's, there are notable and champion trees on the town green, there's a tree that's the skion of the, of the charter rope. Corner across from the Millie Zito Garden. And then they walk past the church and the cemetery, which Daria has been doing some work in and has made the alley look really nice there. I can't remember, did he say, he's just gonna look through the fence, isn't he? He's not going in.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's not going in.
And then he crosses the street and we're not going into the Philly Park Gardens, we're going behind the gardens into what's known as Scott Trail. And it's a, oh, when you go and speak to June, is it Scott Trails or Scott Trail? I'm not sure whether...
All right, I'll ask her.
And she said it's a 200-year-old garden back there, it's a lovely, like a quarter acre, a quarter mile horseshoe trail that's good for families to come and talk, to, to walk through, and there are some champion trees there, which will be pointed out. And then when the walk is over, it goes from 10 to noon. It may go a little over, depends on whether people ask a lot of questions or not, then people have the option of staying and walking through Philly Park on their own. And as I understand, June, who is, June O'Connor, is one of the co-chair of the Philly Park Committee. And she is putting together a booklet, which she's kind of wants to talk to Daria about, make sure the trees are correct, that they...
No, it's funny, it's funny you say that, remember in the Bloomfield Journal, they would have all pictures every week from the Wittenberry Historical Society?
Yeah.
And I cut them out, all of them, so I looked in my file, because we were looking, we wanted to see if maybe we could see some old pictures that had some of the old trees on the town green and maybe even those pin oaks in front of the library. So I was looking at a lot of things and they had something, and they said that the Philly Pond used to be a dump.
Oh.
How is it possible that there was a garden there?
It wasn't a garden, it was, it was a trail, it was a forest, I knew. I don't think there was a garden.
But wasn't that weird when we were in there? That's why I was trying to see that they had that fireplace thing, way in the woods.
She didn't know, I asked her about it, there's a brick fireplace in the woods and I, you know what the history of that. And I, maybe we'll have to ask the Historical Society, because I think that would, people are going to ask that, what is that?
Yeah, exactly.
So... Excuse me, what kind of dump was Philly Pond before?
I don't know, it, it, it said that it was a dump, I don't know, I'll have to look into that.
To make Philly...
I'm not sure. Thing.
I, I think they created that pond, I don't think it was there at the beginning.
Hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
So much has changed, like even when John Keough came and he read that rock right there at Town Hall, he's like, oh, so this Town Hall was built in 1961, and I'm like, oh no, it's a lot older. And no, it used to be like a Methodist church, so that Town Hall was only built in like 1961, 62. Doesn't it seem like it's a lot older?
That, I don't know.
Last century, it's, it's like almost...
I don't know, I was born in the 60s and I didn't think that was, you know, it just seems like it's a lot older. It'd be like 1945 or something.
Oh, no, I don't think it was that old.
But it's not, yeah, yeah, but it's not, because even some of those pictures, I have some pictures from the, the Historical Society where you could see that it was. It was, it's from like the 1960s and there's a church there.
You know, it would be nice if maybe you could get some of those pictures, Daria, and maybe composite and use it as part of our publicity for the tree kickoff, for the kickoff.
All right.
Arboretum. And I'm open to ideas now, our next meeting will be, I believe, after the, oh, let's see, 2021. I think it might be after the event, so if we, we might have to correspond, hold on a sec. So...
So, we might need some help doing a little bit, we'll see what the Town Hall property looks like, but...
I did talk to Dan about that, so our next meeting is on the 28th, so we wouldn't, we'll have to do some meet there, all of us, and do some work ahead of time. The, what we were talking about was mulching around the, the circles of the trees. Now, I did ask him and his question was, did we want, if he delivered the mulch, we put mulch around the trees or did we want them to do it?
I would, I would want to do it.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not volunteering anyone else for it, I'll actually do it, because it's actually important. It's not something, obviously, they, they don't do it right.
You could supervise them too, Daria.
Then they'd hate me.
All right.
You're doing it wrong, what's wrong with you? What are you doing? Stop it.
Take it.
You know, if you want to do that and if we could all, if they could deliver the mulch, it's not that hard to put the mulch.
True, it's not.
And I have an edger, I have an edger and we could edge, that, that's the thing is, if you want to edge or do you just gonna put the mulch on just around the circles? What were you thinking, Daria?
I would like to edge, edging is nice, definitely, makes a difference, looks good.
Right.
And I would, bigger the better as far as some of those trees, like that big sugar maple. You know, they're just, they're just not doing well, sugar maples, and you know, what can you do for them? The best maybe you can do is maybe give them a little bit more area to get a little bit more water and not compete with grass. I mean, you know, it's always better to make a bigger island.
Right.
Of course, when you do that, then that, that's, now we get into work that you gotta remove the sod, because you can't put the mulch just on top of the grass.
True.
Okay, so there's a little work involved, unless what?
That grass is kind of lame.
Okay.
There's not a lot of weeds, that's what comes through is weeds.
Yeah.
Um...
Well, if you think it's not much, we could, we could scrape it or something with all this paint.
Exactly.
Probably scrape it right off.
Yeah, so some of the areas, a lot of the tree roots are coming up and there's not that much grass cover around there.
Okay, so the event is September 25th, which is the fourth Saturday. And they're coming to plant the trees on the 22nd, my recommendation, even though it's just two days, maybe we could start that week.
What day is the week is the 22nd?
It's that same week, it's the third, it's the Tuesday and then the 25th is Saturday. So that whole week maybe is when...
It'll be a Wednesday then.
Your what?
Second, it's a Wednesday.
Wait, I'm looking.
The 25th is Saturday?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So Wednesday, is it Wednesday? Okay, I'm sorry, Wednesday is the 22nd. So that's when we're planting the trees, the five trees, so we could conceivably plant the trees that day and mulch, because we'd have some volunteers. And I, I think, Daria, that there's, we need a few more people, because there are a lot of trees there and, you know, you can do the fine tuning, but for people with wheelbarrow to move and put mulch in, I would, I would see more people coming in, even if they just dumped the mulch into each of the, by each tree.
Yeah.
You know, kind of thing, so, how's the group feel about that?
It sounds good.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so why don't, what, you... I, I guess we should just think about reserving that week, which is the 20th, September starts Monday is the 20th. Okay, and, and also, at the same time, I know I had, well, we'll bring it up at the, at the end, is when we, when do we want to plant our mums? Do we want to put our mums in if we put some, I would say, put them in before the 25th, so we can have Town Hall grounds looking as nice as possible. Even if we don't put them in everywhere else, last year we had volunteers and I don't know if you've noticed, but a lot of the places the mums came up from last year, so...
When did we do it last year?
I don't have the date, but I think it was closer to October, near the end of...
Yeah, I think so too, yeah.
You know, people, if you go out in the nurseries now, in August, you already see mums and they're early, mid, late, yeah, and, I mean, everything looks good, so I, I don't see, I see, we should be looking at places where we think moms should go, like I've already been talking to Green Machine, where he planted his begonias, they didn't do very well, and so...
Where was that, Sharon?
That was at the Millie Zito Garden.
Okay.
You know...
They looked pretty bad today.
Yeah, I mean, they do not like water, he got them in too late and I think next year, we've talked about doing a different kind of plant. He also said that he has a lot of perennials and I said, move it over and do the perennials, because they look a lot nicer, and even if they're not in flower, they still look good.
Yes.
Oh.
That's what I was thinking when I was there today, because he has some echinacea in there and that looks good.
Yeah, he has more of that, so I would rather have him plant that.
Yeah.
Okay, so you do like that.
We did it October 7th, they looked at the calendar last year, we did it two weeks later, the mum planting.
October 7th, plant mums. So I was thinking, I mean, even though, I mean, I always like it later, because then you get a later blooming mum, but if we want the town green to look really nice for this, I would say plant them like, you know, the second or third week in September. Like the 13th, the week of the 13th or the week of the 20th. How's that sound to all of you?
Sounds good.
Okay, so the areas we'd want to be concentrating on are, I think in front of the electronic sign, there's an open space there. The town green and the Town Hall, that would be our primary ones. The police station has plantings and stuff, so it really doesn't need even any mums, because the mums from last year, actually two years, they're all there. And it's got plants in it that bloom in the fall. So we could concentrate on that and we could, we have volunteers. Henriette, remember that you had a volunteer list at the Celebrate Bloomfield? Did those people get sent a thank you note?
I, I don't, Gwen, do you know if, did you send it?
I did not.
So maybe this is a good opportunity to maybe come, two of you could compose a letter that says we enjoyed seeing you. At the Celebrate Bloomfield and thank you for volunteering. And we have a a mum, we're gonna be planting mums the week of the twen- we'll we'll pick a date. And would you like to join us?
We could also. An email to everybody on the volunteer list.
Right, right.
You could, but I'd also like to recognize those people.
No, we could do two thi- two separate.
Absolutely. And I have a a flyer from last year that had mums on it that you can use. We we just changed the dates on it. It's like a flyer that says, come plant with us.
Okay, yeah, you could send it to us.
Sure. Okay. I mean, if we get those helping hands, we can accomplish this pretty fast. The more helping hands. We'll have to see if Mike Riley will come and help us too.
He's on the list, so he'll get.
Okay, and I did order uh bulbs early this year. I think I ordered like five hundred, eight hundred bulbs for the front. So I didn't get, wasn't able to get them last year because I waited too late, so I ordered them in July. I just have to go back to them and talk about where we're gonna, you know, order them. But we won't plant bulbs till November or late October, okay? Okay, um. Uh, let's see, so we we we'll have to correspond with each other about the kickoff for this. And I'm hoping the town manager will be there, um the mayor, I don't know who will be involved. We'll have to think about how we wanna run that. If we have a walk from ten to twelve, I don't think we should have um gatherings of people and stuff. Because it'll tie into our time of our walk, but maybe we wanna start at nine thirty. And have like an introductory kind of thing, but then we should decide if we wanna put that into our.
Have a ribbon cutting.
Yeah, like a ribbon, a tree cutting.
Not a tree thing.
It's not a tree cutting, a ribbon cutting, but, okay.
Sharon, do we wanna look at a date for the mum planting?
Uh, okay. Sure. Well, let's see, last year was October, well, if you wanna plant it, I would suggest either the week of. The twentieth or the week before, the thirteenth. We gotta see whether mums are out or not. Do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference.
I don't.
All right, so I think what we have to do, and if one of you wants to go with me or two of you, we can go. I went last year to. Uh, Route Five to plant.
Flower power.
And they they had great mums and they were reasonably priced and we have an account with them. So uh we could go there and get enough for our job. And they have different colors, which is nice. So.
I I like the mums at Meadowview. They just have.
Yeah, but I'm not going all the way up to Meadowview. Not that far.
It's closer than Route Five.
Yeah, I think so.
No, it's not. Massachusetts, you're going out of state.
It's right over Granby.
Yeah.
I've been to Meadowview. Um, well, you can find out, um but we don't have an account at Meadowview, so.
No, go ahead. No, Gwen, are the mums already there at Meadowview?
I don't know. I think they'll be there by that time because I think I saw something. I don't remember. I just think their mums are huge. They really.
Well, I'm not very fond of very large mums because they break really easy. I'm looking for mums that have tighter buds that will open. You don't want buds, you don't wanna get mums that are all open and showing lots of flower.
Oh, no, there's not, Sharon. There's a really tight buds too.
Okay, well.
No, 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 but let's go back to Flower Power.
I I don't mind going there, but you know, I, we can go there. If you're going there earlier for something, if you can find out or someone can find out when they're going to start selling mums. I mean, we can buy them the week before that and have them. We don't have to. You know, it it's it's better to go if you're gonna get on a truck and plant them pretty close to when you pick them up.
I'll email them.
Okay. Because otherwise, you have to pick them up, take them off the truck, pick them back, put them back on the truck. It's easier to kinda coordinate, so you're doing.
Let me find out. I forgot.
Can you find out the cost, so we'll fee, see which one?
Yeah, there's more cost effective?
Yeah, I will. Because if if we're going to spend more than five hundred dollars, I have to get a a pre um estimate before we can purchase them.
Okay, do we know how many you think we'll need?
No, I don't at this point. I'd have to look back on, see. Have to look at our areas because some places have gardens, which we're not gonna rip out yet. And you, I think we just.
And I think some of the mums came up at Mary Hill. I really have been negligent. I didn't go over there this week.
Okay. I don't, each of you who manage a garden, go to those gardens and report back. Where you think mums should go.
Okay.
How many you think. Reasonable and in the areas where they'll really be seen. Swimming pool doesn't need any.
Not at all. It's closed already.
It is?
Because all the, all their staff went back to school.
Oh, so they, I thought they were staying open till September first.
I thought so too.
Okay.
Do you put any mums in pots at the senior center?
Yes, I usually just fill in, get smaller ones and I don't. Plants that are there.
And the senior center sign for uh.
Yeah, the senior, the across from the senior center, the sign in front.
No.
No?
No, no. If you can make a recommendation and we'll see. See where, where, it wasn't in the budget, so I'll have to see. Whether, but I'll tell you one spot that does need them is the um uh in front, the electronic sign. Across from three thirty park. It's not done.
That's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
Oh, that sign.
Yeah.
That's not the seniors side though. That's the. Services, oh, okay.
Right, that's what we were talking about. It's more the common area side, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I definitely think, we, did we put, we have bulbs there. Did we put mums?
I think we we put, everything we put there didn't do well.
Yeah.
So dry.
Maybe we should. The bulbs were nice this year. They did very well.
Yeah, but that's, that's a perfect place for mums because if they don't come back, they don't come back, but you know, they'll last.
Okay, so that'll be, but why don't you, Risa, look at that if you don't mind?
You want me to look at it and what? Oh, okay, how big are the mums gonna be?
Eight inch? We buy eight inch pots.
Okay.
Eight to ten, so they're usually foot and a half to two feet wide. I don't know.
Okay, I can go by there, yeah.
Just average. Uh, okay, that sounds good. So BBC, we have a hundred and thirteen. Uh, likes on the Instagram account and I've been taking pictures. I haven't, but Eva and people have been sending me pictures and the latest one came from Tatiana. And it's of the Bloomfield Library that got posted. And.
Oh, and is that her son standing next to the can- canons? Oh, wow.
Yeah, and he he's getting, he's. Yeah, but uh everybody keep uh, you know, clicking on those. I hope you're following it because it helps our. Credit, I'm looking.
What was the, what was the weird feud you were having with somebody?
No, it's, it's somebody. I know who it is. It's not a feud, but the guy is coming on our site. And just using it to talk and he posted ten. Posted ten postings yesterday after I asked him to please not comment on.
Yeah.
And I can't, I gotta figure out how to remove him. I know who he is, so I'm gonna call somebody and ask him to talk to him. Because he goes and does that on a lot of sites. He is a, he has some um, he has some mental problems, so.
Oh, okay.
Is that, oh, I think I know who it is.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say because I don't wanna, we're being recorded, remember?
No, 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 I know, I get it.
Um, so I was trying to get this, I can show you. So anyway, his, okay, so a hundred and thirteen and the latest one just got posted today. It has eighteen likes. And so, yeah, so we've been doing different things there and we're getting more and more response, which is good. And the Farmington River Park update, um. I was suggesting, we, none of us can get there now. It's too hot. Dan can't help us do anything. And but we do wanna get the area cleared on either side of the kiosk. And I have a meeting with Dave Malesko next Thursday. He told me he's already moving ahead. He met with the gentleman who is the bridge builder for the. The smoke bomb in Granby, which is beautiful what they've done. And he's met with them and the guy is also looking at the kiosk to see what work needs to be done there. He's got the maps ready, so pretty soon we can do the sign. I can execute a sign for there and then we can do the plantings. And so, um, I've been, I even uh talked to Ricky Zito. I don't know if he has anything. I said, if you had any native plants in your nursery or something you didn't want, could we use to put in our. Over there, so we're hoping that he might have some trees or shrubs we can use to. So I had a suggestion of September twenty-seventh, a Monday. For us to go to work at the Farmington River Park, but seeing that we're doing all this stuff on the twenty-fifth. Maybe we should aim for the first week or so in October. We don't wanna go too late. Because if, I have a feeling, if we end up having to go too late, we'll have to do our plantings in the spring, so. Daria, what, how late can we plant in the fall? Would you recommend those arborists?
Nothing evergreen after the fifteenth of October. Everything else can go in. Definitely, like, yeah, it, we were, you have a couple of dogwoods you were mentioning, stuff like that. Yeah, we could definitely do that. And any perennials, those are fine.
Okay, so why don't we set a date? If you look at your calendars, like the um. First or second week in October.
Okay.
See, maybe like Wednesday the sixth.
I have a garden club meeting. I can't do the sixth.
So what time is your garden club meeting?
One thirty.
Thirty, okay. How about the seventh? That's a Thursday, Thursday, October seventh.
That sounds all right for me. What time are you looking at?
Well, um, we're starting cooler there, so maybe like eleven o'clock or ten o'clock in the morning. Depends on how cold it is in the mornings, but. Um, you know, eleven to one, something like that.
That's fine with me.
That would be at the Farmington River Park.
Sharon, I have those unlabeled wildflowers, but they're unlabelled. I don't know what they are anymore.
Oh, I, yes.
Want some?
Yes, and I think what you could do is go back and find out what you bought in the first place, so.
Yeah, I know, I know what we bought, but it's, it's, it's too hard to parse. But you know, some things like the spotted bee balm, I know what it is. You can see asters. You know, and then there'll be mystery plants.
Did you grow ironweed too?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Is your, is your ironweed blooming?
It's like this big, Daria. Baby, baby ironweed. I did, we did them, I did them from seed with a friend who's actually due to appear any second now. So, um. The only thing that's blooming so far is the spotted bee balm and it's really nice.
Is it spotted?
No, no, it's like a funny, it's a a funny, I can, well, I don't know how to do this, but I could. I don't know how to do that, to do a reverse thing and show you, but um, no, it's very pretty.
Okay. Yeah, that was.
How about you, Sharon? The the ironweed I gave you is a blooming?
No, it died, but I'm hoping it has a new root at the bottom. It just got black and it grew like five feet and turned over and died. I'm hoping that. Is something, maybe it'll come back. Does it bloom that first year?
I have an ironweed that's blooming.
Oh, good.
Yeah, isn't it nice? It is.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
And it it sells seeds. Yeah, you'll get more if you don't like mow it down or, you know, pull it out.
No.
You'll keep on getting more.
Good.
Uh, yeah, I really liked it. I was very disappointed that happened. But I started Budlea from Seed last year and I planted it at the town, you know, where that uh uh tripod is. The um, whether the Dunland Woods sculpture. And both that one and mine at home, they all have pods on them, don't they? I think they have seed pods now.
Nice.
Eva, don't the ones at the town hall have seed pods?
Oh, I wasn't paying attention. I'm sorry. All the bee ba- uh, yeah, yeah, they do.
They do.
The ones that, yeah, that are in the um thing with the Dunland Woods uh. Yeah, they do.
So are they, are you gonna let those seed pods drop to the ground? Do they create new plants?
I think they must. I know Eva has um some uh. Butterfly weed. It's not the pink kind. It's more the orange, you know, cultivated one and it's, it spreads around. She, she didn't plant it. I mean, she has it at one spot and then it's all in another spot, so it, it spreads.
Yeah, mine spread up in a few places I didn't plant it. But mine is yellow and orangey looking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't remember whether, what, do you remember what color that was at the town? Was it pink or orange?
I think it's, it's, it's the pink one. It's more the wild one.
Okay.
Because it's bigger. The big tall one is more pink.
Ah, okay. That's, I I didn't remember. I just remember planting the seeds. Um, okay, so we could set that date, so we set a date of October seventh and that'll be on a Thursday. That's all set, okay? And then, um, Trees for Bloomfield, our date for that is September twenty-second. I told you already about.
Right.
And then we will be planting, Ron Pitts has agreed to uh rent the machine and come in and dig the holes for us. And then we'll put the trees in like we did for the last planting. And I have to make arrangements with Dan for the mulch and the compost if we use compost. So we still have to do that, but the trees are on order. Everything has been tagged. Daria and I went up to the nursery earlier this summer and tagged some very nice trees. And we're set with that. And.
We'll eat extra mulch then on the the twenty-second if we're gonna do, not just the trees that are being planted, but if we're gonna do mulch. Um, at town hall around some of the other tree beds.
Right, that's what I thought. We're doing all the beds.
Okay.
Yeah, so actually, you and Daria should go and look and see if there are any beds we're not doing. Are they all, I think they're gonna end up all needing even a little mulch on some of them so that it looks consistent that everyone is mulch. Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. What needs most, what what's in most dire need and what.
Yeah, so we're gonna need a crew for that, but because there's not just a few trees. Um, okay. And uh, okay, where are we now?
So. Seems like a lot of mulch for us to take on.
Yeah, so that's why we'll have to see what what's there. Maybe we'll concentrate on the trees closest to the beginning of it. And see if Dan can ha- you know, bring some of his guys in. Oh, we'll see how many people are willing to volunteer. It it's not a hard thing to put mulch on if it's delivered. Because you're, you're not digging or anything, you're just putting it around some trees. But if if you can't do it, uh you know, if you have back problems or something, I certainly don't expect you to do that. But if, if you can't do it, uh, you know, if you have back problems or something, I certainly don't expect you to do that, so we can work that out. Um, so, the, um, September, okay, talked about that. Uh, on, uh, last, I wanted to tell you that I did do an ad in the Dolls House Foundation, we bought an ad, and that cost the, uh, cost us ten dollars. And it was a very nice event, Risa went, and you wanna tell them a little bit about that event? I'll see if I have. You're on mute, Risa.
It was a, a very nice event, um, it was about, um, hey Gwen, you, would you tell, you have a better memory?
Oh, Gwen was there too.
Gwen was there too, but it was about empowering educators and, and supporting education and educators. But Gwen, take it from there, please.
Encouraging, um, young black girls to, you know, to be proud of themselves, to, you know, encouraging them, and it's almost like a debutante, if you will, kind of thing for young black girls.
I didn't realize it was for just girls, oh.
Well, I thought it was, oh, maybe I'm wrong then, maybe the word dolls make me think of girls.
Very true.
Yeah, but dolls is nothing to do with it, doll was the middle name of the woman that this is named after. And actually, she is the mother of Meredith Johnson, who is the director, so.
Oh, okay.
I used to think Dolls House too, but I.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Leading name then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, it was a nice event, you know?
It was a nice event.
Yeah, so, we, we took, this was their program, I haven't seen the electronic version yet, but, we took an ad out, and I'm gonna show you what the ad looks like. So, this was a, a quote I saw that Eva posted, and it was called, "A beautiful garden is a work of heart." And so we, I just made a little ad up, let's see if you can see it, can you see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's what we did, and, um, it was well received, and we also did one for the Trees for Bloomfield, which is right here, that social justice, and then we did one more, which was the Land Trust.
They need to increase the price of those ads.
Yeah, well, they didn't, I mean, it was a nice thing, and they.
It was, yeah, I think it's, they started, it'll, it'll get, it'll build some momentum going forward, I think.
Yeah, they've been around a while, so, and they've talked about maybe doing a project with us, and I said, that would be wonderful to involve some young people and get them involved, so we'll see how that goes. Alright, let's move to new business, so Dan is not here, he, he couldn't make it tonight, so we're gonna pass him, and, I, I mean, I don't really just tell you that, he said on Thursday, they had four and a half inches of rain in Bloomfield. And they had a lot of, uh, people calling, wanting them to, you know, they had floods, uh, there was damages from the flooding, uh, roads being washed out, I heard that the town, uh, the rail trail had a lot of damage.
Yeah, I saw that.
Road washed out, and, you know, I was thinking, hearing about all of this, and people not knowing what to do in storms, and with more this kind of weather happening with climate change, maybe we should talk about an educational program, uh, to see if something that, they have this newsletter, quarterly newsletter that comes out, I, I don't know who would write it or something, but we should encourage, uh, maybe it's the C E E C or somebody, and maybe we can, you know, contribute, is to have some kind of education to educate the citizens of the town of what you do when you get a big storm or a hurricane, uh, you know, where, what do you, where do you put things? How do you secure your water? Do you save water, um?
I thought something was posted by a few, on a few Bloomfield Facebook pages of what to do. I think Suzette and Rickford, I thought I saw posted.
Well, you know, social media is nice, but it, it's the same people who lead that, those things, and you've got a community of a lot of people who don't go to that, to the social media. So, for me, I would like to see something done community-wide, like the newsletter that they put out goes to every citizen in the town.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I think that's where it should go, because people were asking, what do you, there, there were people asking questions.
Really, okay.
Yes, and I'm trying to think if it's West Hartford, I saw a nice thing of what to do, I can't remember now.
Oh.
Cause I lost power for two hours.
Uh-huh. Well, if you find.
But Eversous wrote, sent me a notification that it was out, and a notification when it came back two hours later telling me what caused it, which I was surprised at.
Wow.
That's very.
Yeah, they said, uh, it was caused by limbs on the wires.
Right.
And they told me it was, you know, was bad, you know, when my power has been restored, and, you know, which I thought was, I couldn't believe it. And it came timely, it wasn't like, you know, which I, you know, I thought was good.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's, it's certainly something to consider, or make a recommendation to the new town manager, we have.
I think so.
Yeah, and we have a new town manager coming in on the thirty first of August, and, uh, we'll have to.
What's his name?
What's her name?
It's a he, and his name, uh, that's a good question, I know his first name is Stanley, I don't know what his, I don't remember his last name. But, um, I did not need him, I meant the other ones who were candidates, so, it, but I hear he's very smart and very interested in the community, and he was going to all of the council meetings and listening in the background.
Where's he from?
He's from Florida.
Oh, interesting.
He's from Florida.
That's different.
Yeah, and he'll have to come here and find a house, cause as a town manager, you have to live in the community.
That's good.
But, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to setting something up so he can meet all of us, and we can find out, express ourselves, and we wanna make sure that he understands and knows about the amount of things that we, are our concerns in the community and for our environment. So that brings us down to the last two items on our list, and one is the fall mum planting. I wrote down September fourteenth, how does that, do we set a date when we were talking before? I don't think.
Yes. That's primary day, is that gonna be an issue?
That would not be good, would it? No, I guess that's not a good day, okay. So that's why I was throwing out a date to get us started there, so what about like, this, the Saturday that, now, when you want volunteers, I find that now that people are working again, they prefer to come on a Saturday.
Most volunteers, when I, we, when I called, during the week was not good for them.
Okay.
Saturdays were bad.
Yeah, so what about the eighteenth, that would bring us?
Isn't that our BBC's, uh, dinner? Sharon?
Oh, yeah, we can't do that.
Not BBC, I'm sorry, the Land Trust dinner.
Yeah, yeah.
Nine o'clock that morning, yeah.
No, we can't do that, that would not work, okay, so, um, well, that brings us back to the, the same week as everything, so what about the eleventh, oh, I may not be here, but the eleventh?
Will we have mums in time?
Well, see, that's it, I don't know, that's awfully early, but it, it depends on, it, it's been very hot, so I,
Yeah.
I, I would not wanna put mums in these very hot temperatures, cause they'll just open up and look ugly after that. See, the ideal time would be to do it on the twenty fifth, but we can't, so we may have to do it during the week, at least get some mums in on our key places, you know, the town, the town hall.
Stuff where, when you're having the walk.
Yeah, so why don't we put, for now, just tentatively say the week of the twentieth, and we'll let, and when we get a little closer, and we, and Gwen's had an opportunity to look Metta View, and I can call Flower Power and see what's the status of the mums. How does that sound?
That sounds good to me.
That's good.
Okay, so the week of the twentieth, and, uh, Henriette, so Henriette was in the news this week, and on social.
Yes.
Media, and her face all over there, and we wanna know, uh, how your event went, and how is your planter doing next to the Little Free Library?
Um, the planter is doing very well, and thanks again to Eva for watering when I was away. Um, the, uh, for those that don't know, the Little Library, uh, Little Free Library Committee decided to have a, a table at the backpack, uh, the back to school program, where they, they were giving us the backpacks, and, and so there were three of us that womped the table, and, um, uh, it went really, really well, and thanks to Eva, Eva brought us wo- wonderful books. We decided that we wanted to, as part of what we were doing, we wanted to give out free books to everybody. And Eva, uh, in her role with the friends, um, obtained books for us that were really wonderful. Um, and so we were really happy with how things went, we were very surprised that a lot of people that came by, um, we, we actually, let me backtrack, um, we had met with Dave Malesko because we wanted to have a flyer printed up, and he accommodated us for that, so we had a fa- a flyer that we were handing out that had all the locations with pictures and addresses of, of the libraries, and, um, the people that stopped by, so many of them said, "Oh yes, we go to these libraries all the time," and then the people that didn't know were genuinely interested in, in learning more. Um, so we thought that it, it really, really went well, and that we got, you know, we got the whole little library, um, thing in town out to people.
No, it's excellent.
We were.
The one at Old St. Andrews, let me tell you, I put books in there, and the next week I went, and, I mean, it's always, you know, filled, and I put books in, and lots of books were gone.
Nice.
Yeah.
Well, that's wonderful, I'm glad to see that, when, when they put it in, there was a little bit of vandalism, and it's so nice to see that, that stopped, and people are really appreciating the books.
Well, someone thought the one at Old St. Andrews may have been a food thing, so they opened it and put food in there.
That's hilarious.
So Sharon, you'll appreciate the Shirley Murtha show left a sign on it. You know?
Oh, she put a sign on it?
She put a sign up, it's not for food, it's, you know, kind of, yeah.
Oh, no, they do have little libraries now, but they do make these little libraries for food now.
Yes, they do, they have them all over West Hartford and Hartford and South Windsor.
Yep.
Okay, Metta View opens on the first, September first, nine to six.
Wow.
And of course, they'll have their moms, so, there you go, I don't need to call them.
How much were their mums last year, do you remember?
Oh, God, I don't remember, I wanna say, three for maybe twenty dollars, I don't remember. They have different price ranges.
Right, for the sizes, right.
Yeah.
Okay, can somebody call and find out what their.
You can't get an answer, they don't answer, they won't answer.
I will put a, yeah, but if I'm friends with them on Facebook, I think if I put a little comment, they usually answer.
Oh, okay, that's wonderful, great.
Yeah, does anyone live on Stewart Drive? Did you know they're filming something next week?
Yeah.
What are they filming?
I don't know.
It has a shooting in it, so they're.
Hallmark movie? Wait, what?
There's a.
Hallmark movies don't have shootings.
No.
Well, they're getting more gritty, what?
Getting more gritty, uh, I just, what I read, and David told me, cause the, it was notified, cause he's on the safety committee, and it's some kind of filming, and it's most, mostly in the person's house, but some of it's outdoors, and according to the articles that were, I guess, on social media and stuff, uh, that it's, you know, it's, everybody's been notified, there might be loud si- sounds, but.
The scene involves an armed assault on the home, and actors will have non-functioning but realistic firearms.
Ooh. Wow. Who are the actors? Is there anybody really?
I have no idea.
I, I heard Antonio Banderas is in the movie.
Get out of here.
Cheryl told me.
Well, I have to tell you, when, many years ago, David worked at City Hall in Hartford, and they were filming a movie there, and he got to be, uh, one of the actors, he, you know, he had like a twenty second part, minute, twenty second part, but Meryl Streep was one of, one of the actresses, and I, I used to say to him, "Why don't you ask her to dinner?" You know, she, she'd come home, and, uh, no, he didn't do that, but she was just starting out, and it was quite, um, kind of an honor to be there, but he worked in City Hall, so he didn't think it was a big deal. So, um, so I, I don't know if you all will be camping out, um, on Stewart Drive.
When is that?
No, I'll, I'll be friends with Peggy that week, I think I'll go up to her house.
Oh, she lives on Stewart, right? Yeah, she lives on Stewart.
She lives on Stewart, yeah.
Where is Stewart Drive?
It's on Doncaster.
Oh, okay, it's off of Doncaster.
Yeah, well, that's good, and I hope we get taxes for that. So the last thing, um, okay, we talked about the volunteers, so I already, you're gonna find, um, and I'm gonna send you the flyer, okay, Henriette? So I don't know if you all know about this, but, um, after, uh, I wanna thank you all for signing up for the, uh, Take Home Harvest Dinner, which is on the eighteenth, and on the nineteenth, I'm sure you might have seen these, this is an Artful Garden Tour by the historical, by, and Ironwood Partners, and if any of you are adventuresome enough, that, uh, Paula and Kevin have organized a bicycle ride, so that people, and I did that two years ago, when we did the bicy, we did bicycles, and we, it was cold that day, it was in October, we were freezing, but we biked from, to every house on the tour, and it was a lot of fun, and so they're doing that again this year. And they're doing a exhibit in the Philly House, they're gonna open the Philly House, and we're going to be able to have an exhibit of the Trees for Bloomfield, so we definitely wanna put up information of, you know, your, um, trees, the, the tree arboretum, Eva, and I think what we should do is probably have Nancy make us, um, a, a small duplicate of the eighteen by twenty-four.
Yeah.
You know, and it, it, I don't think it'll cost us very much, and we could use that and put it up on the, um, the bulletin boards. So that's, I encourage you to go, it's a self-guided tour, it's twenty dollars, you can pay in advance, or you can pick up tickets at Wade's. And I think there's, I believe there's six houses on the tour, and some of them were, uh, some of our winners from the notable land, this is archery, is that I gave, um, uh, Red Pan all the, gave her a list of all the people who were notable landscape winners last year, and they reached out to some of them, and some of them agreed to be participants, so.
Nice.
The love continues, which is really nice, and with that, um, you know, the, it concludes our meeting, and it's.
Good.
Like quarter to seven, we're much better. And, um, if anybody has anything else that they wanna say, any other comments before we close? No? Okay. Would someone like to move for the meeting to be adjourned?
I move for the meeting to be adjourned.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Who was that who moved? I'm sorry.
Daria.
Daria.
Okay.
Okay, so, you have lots to do in the month of September, so enjoy these last few days of August. Um, it's, September is a busy month for us, and then we kinda, it'll be easier again. And thank you all again for your reports on your gardens, but remember, I'm not getting any pictures from you, and it really helps when I can see, and we can look back on those pictures, and see what, you know, where the progress was, if things didn't look good, I'm also looking for where there are gaps and holes. That helps, alright.
Yep, yep.
Hey, alright, that's it.
Alright.
Hey, bye everyone, have a good.
Bye. Have a great day.
Y'all, happy, 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 something. Happy, like, something.